I'll call to order a meeting of the Wilsonville City Council Work Session at 5:00 PM on May 16, 2022. We will start with a review of agenda and items on consent. Does anyone have any comments? Seeing none, we'll move to councillor concerns.
I'm concerned with all the rain.
Well, at least we have less dry conditions. That's all I can say.
That's true.
That brings us to the beginning of our work session about community enhancement grant recommendations with Ms. Momberg.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm Zoe Momberg, Assistant to the City Manager. And this evening, I'm here to present the recommendations from the Wilsonville Metro Community Enhancement Committee to fund the 2022-2023 cycle and also seek your input on this year's funding process. I wanted to provide a little bit of background for those that may not be familiar with this program before we get into the recommendation. This is a program that was established in 2015 by resolution. We just updated our intergovernmental agreement with Metro in 2021. The program has specific guidelines and goals that are established by that resolution, including that the project must be within the city limits and that we can award funds to nonprofits, local government, or school district. There are a number of goals, including improving the appearance and environmental quality of the community, increasing reuse and recycling opportunities resulting in the rehabilitation or upgrade of real or personal property owned by or operated by a nonprofit organization, result in improvement in safety, among other goals. In 2022, the committee also had a few preferences they added to this cycle, which included that they would seek grant requests that did not exceed $20,000, that they met at least two goals or more than one goal. The projects included a financial or in-kind match and/or that they would benefit diverse that they would benefit diverse or traditionally underserved populations. This year, the committee met on March 29 to hear from the applicants, review the applications, and make a recommendation to the city council. I know this print is a little bit small, but this is just a high-level look at the process that we went through this year. Our application process was open from November to mid-January. We provided the information online, offered two application workshops to people that might be interested in applying. We advertised this in the Boones Ferry Messenger and also provided direct outreach via email to those nonprofits we could think of or were aware of, or those that have applied in the past. We received four applications this year totaling a total request of $129,084 in grant requests. Those four projects included the Community Wildlife Connection Project from Natural Resources Department, a hard surface trail project from the Parks Department, a hazardous waste collection event from the Admin Department, and a request from the Wilsonville Boones Ferry Historical Society for an oral history project. After the committee reviewed those four, oh, excuse me, backing up, we had the four applications. Our staff reviews those internally from a perspective of different departments to ensure that we're looking at it from different angles before providing thoughts to the committee, so that staff response is provided to the committee before they make a recommendation. Our current committee is made up of four community members, two council members, and Metro Councillor Rosenthal, who is our representative at Metro. Tonight, I have before you the two separate motions that were provided from the Wilsonville Metro Community Enhancement Committee. The first recommendation was that the city council provide the grant request funding of $40,000 to the Wilsonville Parks Department Hard Surface Trail. This is a $40,000 request with a $35,000 match that the Parks Department has put into the CIP budget request that you'll see later this month. This is a hard-surface ADA trail that would connect from the Old Town neighborhood to Boones Ferry Park. This project was identified in the Boones Ferry Master Plan. And it does meet the two preferences, including met more than one goal and provided a financial match. The second recommendation or second motion that they made was to fund the Wilsonville Boones Ferry Historical Society Oral Present Oral History Preservation Project. This project is intended to preserve the existing oral history that the Historical Society has collected. They're currently on older formats such as VHS tapes, excuse me, cassettes, or other formats, so they want to move this into a digital format so that they're preserved for a longer period of time, available to community members and researchers. This request was for $8,250. This group has two additional projects that were funded in 2020 and 2021 that are not yet complete. These were, the active grants they have are a photo archiving project where they were awarded $16,000. And they also have an oral history project from the 2020 period that they wanted to collect the current history of what was going on with civil unrest and with the pandemic. That was for $10,200. Both of these projects were due, or excuse me, delayed due to the pandemic. The committee felt that it was prudent to add an additional recommendation that they not be awarded any additional funding until they've completed all of their community enhancement projects. So these are two separate motions, one for the Hard Surface Trail as one recommendation, and the second recommendation was for the Boones Ferry Historical Society Oral Presentation Project. This evening, I'm seeking your direction on how you would like us to move forward this year. Would you like to see this in one resolution or in two, and if there's any additional information you need from us before we move forward? And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you for that overview. Councillor Linville and I are the liaison from the council. And there was some interesting discussion. I don't know if this is the right, I mean, we can, I think I want to kind of maybe dive into the different with the Historical Society because there was interesting discussion that is, I think, important perspective for the council to look at. It was a split decision on whether or not to fund that one. I think that's good context for you guys to have. There were really strong arguments on either side. I think some of us were leaning like, hey, the pandemic was a unique circumstance. Yes, they're really behind, and it's a, and are they taking off more than they can actually handle? Or, you know, can they really get all this done effectively in time, in a time-efficient way? And then we came up kind of with a not fully supported compromise, but a compromise nonetheless to give them, like, say, must complete and show completion before going on further. But I think they're doing really important work. I know a lot of that stuff is time-sensitive. And I don't know if Councillor Linville wants to kind, because you had a unique perspective on that too that I thought was really valuable in the meeting when we looked at that. But I'm about to put you in the spot. Yeah. But I, I, there was just a good, robust conversation. I don't know if you can recap that even maybe a little further. I don't know if you have the, the notes there in front of you, but I don't know. I think it's good perspective for everybody here to, like, revisit.
Well, I would if I could recall. I mean, it was, it was a while, it was a while ago. And I think there was not any concern that that the, that the, that the projects would not get completed. But I think there was a little bit of concern that, you know, we're, we're a little backed up in their projects with previous awards. And so I think, I think that was really what the major considerations were for, for the Historical Society. So, thank you. So because the committee has already voted to do this, and they've considered it and come to a vote, I'm personally supportive of their vote because I'm going to, they've taken the time to deliberate on that. And, and I do know there, there are lots of projects that couldn't get done during the pandemic. You couldn't find contractors, different things like that. So I'm, I'm satisfied with, with that. And Ms. Momberg, your statement about what we want to decide today also related to, do we want to do we want to vote in two separate resolutions or not? Okay. Were you going to add something?
I don't think it matters. It sounds like there's consensus that you want to move forward with this so we can put it in one resolution. I think that would be fine.
Sounds like they did, they found a way to just move it along.
And I guess I should note, just for anyone that's not familiar with the project, there's generally, we're trying to get to a one-year. They have one year to complete the project with an extension of two years. We've been more on a two-year cycle. And we're trying to get people to a one-year with one-year extension so that we can stay within the requirements of our intergovernmental agreement with Metro. That is where that piece comes from that I did not mention earlier.
Well, and I, I wanted to add something about the, the trail because I've walked through there. I don't know, I mean, sure, it wasn't that particular route, but trying to get from Old Town to Memorial Park is kind of a winding, lumpy, weird, not great route. And certainly wouldn't be great if you were using some kind of wheelchair or, or needed walking assistance. So I think that's a great project and fits with our goals. It's in the Parks Master Plan.
Yeah. If I could just mention too, as we looked at that, and the committee looked at several different representations of other communities that had done this work in a similar way. And I think it's just going to be a wonderful addition to, to our community that many people will be able to enjoy.
Great.
Yeah. And it's going to look really nice.
Really thoughtful, beautifully done, like really mindful for different populations, and really, really cool.
Mayor, Councillor Leahan, how's her name raised?
Oh, Councillor Leahan, I'm sorry. Multimedia here, sorry.
Yes, I, I, I was not part of the, of course, the evaluation of these things, but I am familiar with the Historical Society since I am a member of it. And I would say the, the two, this one, the oral history one of those three projects, this oral history one is probably the most important in terms of being time-sensitive. In other words, it has to be, we're, we're going to lose all that stuff. It, it just won't last forever. Those old VHS tapes are, you know, day by day deteriorating. And, and they, they haven't been reproduced in any way or duplicated. So we don't, we don't want to lose that because there's no getting it back. The photo archive project, which was a previous one, that's the one that got cut off by the pandemic because they were using the attic of the library set up with the archivist and a couple of photographer people. And then the decision was with the pandemic and, and other issues with using the attic of the library that they couldn't use that space anymore. And, and so then they've been struggling both with the pandemic and with trying to find a physical space. And I would say that's the main problem with the Historical Society all these years and decades is they don't have a and decades, is they don't have a home base. And, and so they're kind of shuffled from one spot to another, and the library has been fabulous in storing the stuff in the attic, but it's not accessible to the public, and it doesn't provide a workspace for the Historical Society to get anything done with the archive or anything else. So when you look at other communities that do have functional historical societies, whether it's Camby, or Sherwood, or Tuawalatin, or I don't care, they have a physical space somewhere, whether it's very modest or, or shared space, but they have some sort of dedicated space. Otherwise, they're just too invisible and never really get off the ground. So that's, that's an issue. I think this is a reasonable thing, say, we have to get these done before taking on any more projects. But, but the two, the archive, the photo archive and the oral history preservation, those are, are critical to preserving Wilsonville's history regardless of what happens in, in the future, or if the Historical Society falls apart or disappears. We don't want to lose those assets.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Lehan. I'm hoping with the advent of the Arts Cultural Heritage Commission and other things that we will build those safety nets. And certainly, starting with these records, retention is a great way to go. So did we cover what you needed? I think we're all good there?
Yeah, we'll bring this back to you at consent at the June 6 meeting.
Great.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing those. And so now we'll come back to the Wilsonville Framework for Inclusive Engagement with Mr. Pauli.
Good evening, council. It's good to be with you this evening. Give me a moment to get the presentation going. All right. So a couple purposes here. Really introduce this project that's been ongoing for a while. I mentioned it kind of in passing as I talked about middle housing and Frog Pond, but really want to focus in on this project and what's been going on and where it's going and get some feedback from you. Brief story of this project, it really started as part of the middle housing project. We applied for and received some grant funding from Metro specific to outreach and reaching historically marginalized communities. And with that specific, the Latinx community was a specific focus of that work, and we had some focus groups as part of the middle housing project that were really wonderful events, really enjoyed participating in those, and got some feedback that was subsequently integrated and noted was integrated into what we ended up adopting for the middle housing project. So with that all done, there was some Metro grant funds remaining, and so we worked with Metro to kind of develop an additional scope, to continue to, to build on that, to develop a framework that really could be taken off the shelf and used for a variety of things to improve inclusive engagement for, for a wide variety of projects. Really, the overall intent, as we've written, is a strong foundation for engagement efforts to increase diversity, equity, and inclusion, meaningful engagement to all members of the community, particularly those historically marginalized. So Mr. Bill De La Cruz, who you all know from the DEI work, is providing consultant support along with colleague Pat Noyes, who is with us this evening as well. Bill did have a conflict tonight, as you all know, he does a lot of facilitation and often has some busy evenings, but Pat is here and can help answer questions that you may have. So since this particular phase of the project kicked off in February, Bill and Pat have reviewed past efforts and coordinated with and advised the Frog Pond East and South Outreach and observed some of those events. They've drafted two documents, which you have in your packet. One is the framework, draft framework document itself, which, and also a barriers in action document. And we'll go through, I'll describe those in a bit more detail here in a minute, but did also want to note that last week, the team took both, both these documents and a similar presentation to this, both to the DEI committee and to Planning Commission and received feedback. Apologize, I don't have much of a report on that as I was, I was out of the office and haven't had a chance to catch up on all the notes from it. But I've heard some, that some good feedback was received and look forward to reviewing that in more detail. And tonight, want to hear from you and your thoughts. So let me next give some highlights from the documents and then I'll turn it to you for comments and questions. So really, what the framework, I kind of gave the vision or the intent, we're really looking for effective public outreach, to build on things we've done with middle housing, with the town center plan, and other things to really continue to improve. And, and there's a six-step process that's in the document that's been drafted. But the idea is that anything like this really needs to be flexible, it needs to have some kind of key principles, key elements, but also be able to be plugged into different types of projects at different levels. Some projects, you'll be starting a vision and really start at the base. Other projects such as Frog Pond, you know, is already down the road, has all these specific requirements from Metro or the state, plus is already has a number of previous planning documents that kind of set up that we're building upon. And so being able to put it into different types of projects is important. And designing engagement that is inclusive and meaningful in all these different situations. And also, a term I like to use as we talk about this, is stories to policies, really getting these authentic stories from a variety of community members and translating that and getting that, having that have impact on policies that are made. So here's the six steps that have been drafted that you'll find more detail in, in your packet. Step one is oftentimes, you know, we make some assumptions, and step one is really a slowdown point, I would say. It's, you know, take time to really define the problem and identify what you're trying to do and not move too fast past that and, or make too many assumptions. Really listen and think and be very thoughtful about defining the problem and identifying the desired outcomes. And once you have that as a real strong foundation, you can move to what are the criteria and measures to determine if you're going to meet that desired outcome? And then brainstorm alternative solutions, evaluate the alternatives using mutually agreed-upon criteria, and then consider the trade-offs, and then finally develop recommendations that would go subsequently through your advisory boards and then eventually to, generally to council to make a decision. So Pat, I might pause here to see if you have anything to add on, from the summary of really the six steps of the framework.
I think the most important thing is developing a framework that all citizens, stakeholders, potentially affected parties can understand the steps that you're going through so that they know where they are, how their information or input or engagement will be used. And so it is, it is a clear and repeatable process that over time, Wilsonville stakeholders will come to understand exactly where they are in the process and how their engagement is meaningfully used by the city in terms of making decisions, whether they be policy, project, planning. And so I think that one of the things that we want to do is just make each step clear and understandable so that people know where they are as they come in. And then they, they can see how their input and their perspective is used in developing the eventual recommended solution.
Thank you, Pat.
Excuse me, you have a question from Councilor Linville?
Sure.
Comment? My brain's having just a little bit of difficulty with, with the, with the, I guess, the concepts here. And I'm just trying to figure out, because the, the steps for public decision-making are really generic, they're, they're what we do regardless. But then there's a discussion about a framework for engagement that, that has different kinds of steps in it that are defined in the documentation here. But in the previous slide, it referred to these six steps as the framework. So I'm, I'm really struggling with how, does the framework overlay on the process or wrap around the process? Or does there need to be another step in there that infuses the framework for outreach, DEI particularly, as it relates to specific kinds of decisions and identifying who do we need to talk to, who, what are the communities of interest? How will we design a strategy for outreach? So I, I'm really struggling, just conceptually, with, with how the two pieces fit together. And maybe we're just not there yet. Maybe that's a process that will happen through June. Maybe Pat can respond to that, I don't know.
I mean, that one slide, we try to be concise on our slides, doesn't have the whole picture. Certainly, those are really, I think, the more precise language are, those are the steps for public decision-making. And in, in the document, as you design the process, I mean, those are basic steps, but there is a lot more discussion about identifying the different groups you need to reach out to and the different kind of tools that you can use to reach out to them. But really, the decision-making process is really, you know, there's the part, again, going back to that, stories and policies, is how do you get the stories? How do you reach the people to get these authentic stories, understand their perspectives, the different groups, and then plug them into a process for a decision that needs to be made? So those six steps are really the decision process, but certainly there's, it is certainly broader than that. There's different components about identifying and using different tools to reach groups.
Yeah. The statement on, on page 57 of our packet, just above the table one, says, "The framework for engaging the community in a fair and transparent decision-making process is developed around the six steps for decision-making." So that says to me, we're talking about two separate things. The framework for outreach and engagement is different than the decision-making steps. And am I correct in, in that assumption?
Yes. Pat, feel free to step in, but also I-
Go ahead, I'm sorry, Dan.
No, go ahead, Pat.
I think what's important to understand is what we're trying to do here is integrate rather than separate engagement and decision-making. So that if we know the steps that we're going to follow for developing recommendations in conjunction with or in engagement with stakeholders, that's what we're trying to do here. And there are other steps that are potentially requirements of the city or general practices. But what we want to do is follow these six steps as, as the six steps that the public and the stakeholders can see where they, where they engage, where they get to influence the steps of the process. So the idea here is to try to integrate rather than create an engagement process that's an add-on to the development of recommendations.
I wonder if, if also what might be part of that is, you know, this is, this is meant to be really generic so we could apply it systematically to everything that we do. Right? I mean, and some of the things we do are really long-term, like the middle housing plan. I mean, how long have we been talking about that?
Well, or city, or town center.
Or town center. And so if we're looking at the, the steps to decision-making, and it's early in the process, and, and maybe the council is, is starting to set the process up, I'm hoping this can remind us to involve some of these steps along the way so that we don't go too far down the road early on and then accidentally exclude some input or some, you know, basically different levels of input by going down our path the way we normally do. So this is like a, a set of filters that it seems like we want to keep applying along the way. And they probably, in each case, in each stage, we don't have the same opportunity to, we're not going to always invite people and send newsletters out like every three days. But we have, but I'm hoping this is a, is a way that early on in the process, we don't go too far before getting that diverse level of input that takes this level of rigor.
Yeah, and also I think having the, the understanding of these different steps is it makes it easier to communicate in a project like Frog Pond where we are in this framework process. So there's not expectations that we're, you know, kind of starting from square one, but you're better able to frame the, the expectations for those involved. So good comments, thank you. Anything else at this juncture?
Council, I see number eight, Council, Council President Ockervall.
Thank you.
There, there we go. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Pauli, for, for your presentation. We're just kind of jumping right in. So, so I'll jump in as well. These six steps, I appreciate what you're saying, and Pat, what you're saying about that they're, they're distinct steps and it's important to be clear where we are when we have people coming because it seems that many times perhaps we have members of the community that engage in one or two of the steps, but they're maybe not there for the full journey through all six stages. So having that clarity of where we are in the process and having that template to, to work off of really makes sense to me and being able to, you know, describe to community members where we're at, what we're looking for. The other piece, however, that I believe is important is the feedback to the community members that may not be there for the full journey. So if they're involved in step two or step three or, or whatnot, and maybe don't, they're not involved in the same, in the same level in the later steps to see what some of their input, how it came to fruition, or how it was kind of changed or, you know, shaped over time, or perhaps it wasn't able to be carried forward for any number of reasons. But where is that feedback loop back to them? And I guess I just don't want that feedback piece to be auxiliary in any way because I think it's key to, to all of this being sustainable in the long term and building that trust. So I don't know if that needs to be articulated in these six steps itself because it is such a critical piece, or if it's an asterisk after each step or something, I don't know. But it just seems like it's really key, and I, and I wouldn't want it to get lost in a secondary layer.
Good point, thank you. Right, we can come back to this. I just want to highlight the, kind of the other component of this, particularly when we're talking to reach historically marginalized groups. A big part of this is understanding what are the barriers to engagement. And this is a portion that we're continuing to, it's really a light draft at this point, and we look to develop this, put some more meat on the bones of this as this project progresses. But there's a table- But there's a table in the document, it's a page, this is just a brief summary of the page here, but then I flipped. So page 61 of your packet. And that table shows where, you know, there's, and it's divided up, there's things such as the different resources available to different participants, technology access, trust in government, or lack of trust of government, language, cultural, and physical barriers, project awareness oftentimes is a barrier, and power differentials and dynamics in the community. And these are all things that really take some thought, to slow down and be thoughtful about what are these barriers? And what are potential actions? And the project team feels that that can be a powerful thing for the city as we're planning outreach, is being able to readily, okay, what are the common barriers? And making sure we're, have awareness so we can remove those barriers as much as we can during these processes. So interested on, so kind of two overall questions. I'll get to next steps here in a minute. But as we discuss here, and Pat, anything to add on barriers? I was going to jump into the questions we have for them, but anything you'd like to add on the barriers?
I will just note that we did present this to the DEI committee last week, and they offered, they, I think they felt that the barriers were fairly well-defined, but they offered quite a few additional actions that could be taken that will be incorporated going forward. So it was a very fruitful conversation with them.
Thank you, Pat. It's really then, in terms of the framework document, we've already gotten to this, is there anything incorrect or missing? Like the feedback loop that Counselor Ockervall talked about? And just kind of more differentiating, like Counselor Linville talked about?
Excuse me, I'm not sure if, we've got a comment from Counselor West, if it's part of this or what? Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead. I just spurred some thoughts as you talked about barriers and just kind of got me thinking on some definitions and things that I'm seeing here. I guess, is our goal and purpose in this, just to define it, because some of this is pretty generic and a little bit nebulous, is our goal equality or equity when we talk about this? Is our goal to, and what does that mean to achieve equity specifically as we use this term? And we talk about racial disparities and other things throughout the document, or power dynamics and things like that. I guess I would like to have a clearer understanding if it is to make sure that we give everybody a fair opportunity, but we cannot dictate the outcome of things? Or if equity is to readjust the shares so everything is basically like equitable? We, citizen A and B, we adjust the shares to benefit and make them the same. So I guess I'm not quite sure on what that definition is.
That's a good point. I, you know, equity is always the point here, and, you know, it's maybe a spectrum. But I think the idea is getting the voices heard, right? And making sure that everyone has that voice. And others, people have, different groups have different levels of barriers to getting their voice involved in the process. So that sense is very equitable. But I think, once we have all the voices on the table, then we're considering all that input together as a body.
I guess, in that definition, for me, that would be equality because we're making sure everybody has equal opportunity. Disparities happen for a wide facet and varieties of reasons, some of which are nefarious and many of which are just for various, many, many reasons, right? And so for me, equity is when we adjust for current and historical injustices that exist both in reality but also through, are informed often through this type of work, through different critical theories. So critical race theory, gender theory, all these different theories that are more academic and whatnot. But they're informing this whole equity talk. And if we're talking about adjusting shares to get a certain outcome, I think that's an important distinction to make if that's what we're trying to do here. Now, I think all of us, without argument, are 100% on board with the moral, like, prompting to make sure that, like, every citizen in Wilsonville has a voice. Everyone has, feels like they can come and they can come to the council and express concerns, engage in their city, and engage in the public process, be a member of our community, that they have access to these things. And if there are something that we're not aware of that needs to be removed, we are ready to remove that. But when it talks about us adjusting shares to determine outcomes, that tends to be the academic destination under the, kind of, the social work that's done under the terms of equity. And I'm wondering if, it just sounds like to me definitions matter when we make documents up like this. What we're saying seems to be a little more equality-driven and not necessarily equity-driven.
Could I ask you to refer to a page, a citation in the page?
Well, the whole thing is DEI. And then, and one of the things that just got me talking about disparities and talking about barriers and stuff, if it's on page 55. Yeah, benefits of engagement, engaging the public.
Which paragraph is this?
Yeah, if you go to the second, I mean, the second bullet point, let me make this bigger, hold on. I think the second bullet point here, it talks about, yeah, so improving the quality and discussion about racial disparities, economic conditions, community development and needs, multifaceted process, relationships building, trust, respect, all those things. When it talks about discussion around racial disparities and then we're talking about DEI, I'm like, well, are we going, like, what is the goal?
May I just say, I didn't see, is there something in here that talks about realigning shares?
No, I'm asking about definitions are we using when we address these terms?
Okay, good. I didn't see that in here.
No, it's not in here.
So may I ask a question along the same way to see if we can get to it? So we don't, I mean, I understand there are many academic theories we can go into here. But to me, the way I was looking at this is, the experience I've had coming to many city council meetings and talking to people about it, and also my experience when my three kids were little, being a single parent, I really did not have time to go to a lot of things. And I could not go. They didn't have a place for the kids to sit. I remember being turned away from me, no, kids can't come in here. Okay, so by adding childcare and going to some different locations, that person can a little bit more easily come to the meeting. It's still pretty hard, but I don't think we're, by doing that, that looks to me like we're adding an opportunity to make that more possible so that you're not turned away. We don't have any place for the kids to sit. Sorry, kids can't come to this meeting. I don't think we ever say that, but I remember that happening. And so we're making it possible for people who were unable to be there. Or it's too far to go. It's, they don't have a car. They really do need that 10 minutes of childcare or one hour during the meeting to be able to go give testimony. Or they need some language services to send the test. I mean, various things like that, I don't, so I guess I would ask you, Mr. Polly and Pat, is there anything in this plan that involves diminishing someone else's share?
That has not been a discussion to this point. I don't know if that came up at all in the other meetings.
We would have to invest in it because, you know, in the years past, in our culture, we have not done these things. So I think it's going to take a little bit more effort.
Yeah, I think the goal of this work is just to reduce barriers.
We're just reducing barriers, it takes effort.
And to meet people where they're at and not make assumptions that, you know, while we put it in the Boons Ferry Messenger or on our website.
And they may not show up.
Right.
We'll just put a survey out there.
Right.
Because we also know that lots of people with cars and time also don't come to the meetings. So it's not like we're going to get flooded with people because these are, some of these meetings are pretty boring.
Not this one.
I hope that we will get some barriers reduced so that we can find out more from people who have the interest and wherewithal to participate.
Yeah, and so I just, I just think that when, for me, that's more of an equality framework. I think that there's a lot of connotations when we talk about equity and what that means academically and what worldview is informing this type of work and where is it coming from, I think matters. Also, I mean, there's another thing in here under principles of outreach. It talks about, like, be transparent about the process motives and power dynamics. What do we mean by power dynamics? What does that mean specifically? I'd like to know, what does it mean by power dynamics? But that, those words matter.
So are you asking for them to add a definition? I'm just looking for what we want to do.
No, but I think as we look at this general document that's going through and what we're looking at directing the staff to do and to move forward with, having a clear understanding about these words being used, I think, is important because it's informing our work.
Right. So do we need, if you want to have a, I'm just looking for a practice-
I can even take, I know, I can take offline too and be like, I can even go offline too.
Well, yeah, I'm just looking for a way to translate this for something for them to do. So they could perhaps add a definition. We do not see anything about shares. Thankfully, that's not in there.
Right, I'm just looking at the actual common definition of equity right now as it's done in DEI work.
Or equity or equality.
Yeah, yeah, and so there is kind of this-
Maybe you could respond and we could have that. And I've seen some diagrams, there are some nice things that Bill de la Cruz has shared. Maybe that could be in there so we don't get, the whole process doesn't get off track.
And I can take some of these offline because, you know, I know, we only have so much time. Yeah.
So clarity, I see what you're saying. We want to be clear about what we mean there.
I think that's valuable because, yeah, some of these ideas, the intent can be taken, can be triggers to certain people and, yeah. And other, just barriers or any other comments? And then again, we're going to take this, we're going to revise it, take it back-
I think, I'm curious, I'm looking forward to seeing what the other groups added because I'd love to see more input and we know there are barriers. Counsel President Ockervall.
Thank you, yeah, I agree. And I would expect that probably this has been raised in some of the other feedback meetings that you've already gotten. But one thing that came to mind, you know, the mayor shared experience of trying to attend public meetings with kids in tow. And that's something that I've experienced as well. And so from my own feedback, snacks don't appear anywhere on this list. And they are so key, if you're in that situation. Because, you know, you might be able to ask yourself to sit through a couple hours of a meeting for something that you care deeply about, but you can't really ask a first grader to do that. You know, unless they're occupied and are fed. And sometimes, you know, everyone's time is short. It's just, go directly from a daycare pickup or from, you know, childcare situation to oftentimes evening meetings. And having some string cheese and crackers is all the difference. So I think snacks is definitely something for this list. And also, I did notice with the internet access and technology, and we've seen that in the last two years grow tremendously as far as how we've relied on technology for engagement channels, right? And one thing that I think we've heard, you know, recently in this last year that I've had discussions with from the school district because they're in a similar situation where a lot of engagement, a lot of the time spent with students went online in the last two years, is through their family empowerment center, they've done technology classes using the sites that a caregiver needs to access in order to have that sort of involvement in their students' academic progress and things of that nature. So if we would do something similar to that, would that mean if we have technology classes at the library or at Parks and Rec or things like that, are we using our own sites? Let's Talk Wilsonville and other sites that are kind of known channels for us? Are we using those as examples of, you know, navigating a web form? And this is how you submit? Or things of that nature, just something to think about? How we can not just provide computer or internet access, but provide training on using those platforms, being comfortable logging into a Zoom meeting? Things like that, too. I thought I would just add that as a possible strategy for some of those barriers.
And Counselor Linville, thank you.
I think one of the things that I'm hearing, which I don't want us to have to be so specific for where we are with this right now, is that, and I saw it in the document somewhere along, was to ask our, the populations that we are concerned about that have historically been underrepresented in our processes should be the people who are telling us how to reach them. And so I hope that that's going to be part of the project. It won't be that difficult for us to identify what those populations are within our community and then to go out and ask them. What are the circumstances under which you would feel comfortable providing that kind of input that we would like to get from you and hear from you? So whether that's single parents, whether it's low income, whether it is certain ethnic, cultural groups, those are, probably would be really great for them to tell us. And then it's easy to overlay that over then the strategies for engagement.
Thank you.
Thank you. And this might be the same thing that Counselor Linville is saying, but I also think it's important to, this would take some investment, it would take some connectors, but finding points of influence in different groups, you know, you think about the person who suggested something to you about a place to go or where there's a resource. It might just be a one-on-one conversation with somebody that you knew and trusted. And then you go ahead and try it out. Or they're going to say, you know, why don't you go down there with me next time? I go every Thursday. I mean, it's probably a sustained effort to try to find, it's more along the lines of what Counselor Linville was saying, that maybe we put in our framework that we will try some ad hoc, one-on-one efforts periodically, so it's not just one and done.
Yeah, I think that's an important component is, and it has to be, outreach needs to be scalable, that it can be something, you can have a large group or have a one-on-one conversation on. So, good point.
I don't mean to interrupt, but-
Oh, Counselor Lee Hen. Thank you, I'm not doing very well on the multimedia.
I jumped in because I know I don't show up on the mayor's little screen. But anyway, I was going to say, one of the groups I think that we, that is very easy to look past, that's a significant part of our population in Wilsonville, is the mentally ill and developmentally disabled because we have a significant population at Vill Ploa. So it's not that I think we, we're trying to get them to engage with Frog Pond, but are we, do we engage them in other ways? I mean, I know we do outreach to the disabled in terms of transit and how that functions. But are there other parts of city functioning, parks and so forth activities that we haven't really done the outreach or made it possible? You know, it covers a wide range of ability levels. Wide range, from people who are going to jobs every day to people who are pretty housebound. So that's a stickier one. It's harder to make it fit in an ordinary, you know, framework that we've done, check off all the boxes. Or, it requires a more proactive approach, which I think transit is the one department that really tries to do that, figure out what the needs are and approach them. But I don't know that we do that generally with that population.
That may be, the term proactive might be the one that we're looking for, that routinely build- build in new proactive approaches. And there's also a population of people who may be older populations, living alone, who may need extra proactive. That, again, could be that point of influence. Maybe it's a neighborhood emergency contact system or neighborhood network that could be used there. And then the other one that that just reminded me also of is, is there a checklist, a checkpoint within here to validate the physical accessibility of sites? Not only for the meetings that we're having, when we're saying, this is where we're going to meet, we'd like your feedback, but the things that we're building. I know we follow ADA rules and so forth, but sometimes we're intersecting with older parts of the community. And we get used to, if we're not operating a wheelchair, we don't know what barriers Counselor Leehan, did you--
And I would throw in there, we were doing a lot of outreach when we had Meals on Wheels, and I don't know to what degree Meals on Wheels are still functioning, but also when we had the big lunches at the senior center. And as those start ramping up again, then we start getting more contact and figuring out what those people need that are in the community. But the pandemic has had an impact on a lot of those kinds of outreach programs.
Okay. I know you've got some more pages in your presentation. How are we doing? Did we cover all of them ahead of time? Thanks for all the comments.
There was a couple of questions. I think the comments have been good. There's other, we talked about additional barriers, other ideas to address barriers. We've talked a bit about that. We've talked about where further detail or guidance on the framework document itself. So we've gotten a number of things. So just if you have anything additional on any of those would be the only thing.
Counselor West.
Dan, are you like the best contact if you have further comments or questions or hash things out after this? Okay. You're the point man. Yep, okay.
You can meet with him in your office.
Yeah, I used him today.
Yes, we'll start using our city council offices now. So Counselor Leehan, I see your hand.
Yeah. So maybe since we have Dan Polley here, this would be a place to raise that other issue or say, which is the DEI one, regarding elevators in our multifamily units and the degree to which those are required or not required in our--
Vertical housing.
Vertical housing tax credits. And what our responsibility is, this, you know, it kind of bleeds over into this realm. But if we're providing tax money or tax abatements, which is another kind of tax money, does that raise our responsibility, our level of engagement in terms of DEI, in terms of providing access to the disabled population, when it might not be required in a private development to provide an elevator in a building or whatever? And we don't need to get into this discussion here, but I did want to raise it at some point that I think we should have that conversation with Dan Polley, because he's been so involved in the vertical housing thing, but also with Dan Carlson from Building Department and, you know, and maybe economic development. You know, I think it puts a little higher burden on us as policy developers to ask the question about what's appropriate. So anyway, I mean, it's hard to do this kind of outreach or thinking about including these different populations and not have it bleed into all kinds of other policy issues that the city is dealing with. But that's one of them that has come up and in various discussions that I've had now since the last council meeting. So just a red flag, a flag, not a red flag, but just a flag, a low-low flag.
A friendly flag.
Yeah. I started on my notebook and I'll share it with staff working on those projects.
It's a friendly flag to help us have a filter to remember to check for that. We were having a discussion about even the difference in working from home, which is continuing with hybrid work and maybe the person you're meeting with is in a wheelchair. If you're living in a building that doesn't have an elevator, then maybe you can't meet with that person. So it goes on and on. So I think that was a really good point to bring up as we look ahead and plan where we're having outreach meetings and what we're doing about building going forward.
Because it isn't strictly a building code issue and it isn't strictly a planning issue. It's a larger policy issue.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. So that brings us to discussion about the fireworks planning and preparation ideas we're going to talk about with Ms. Trowha.
Actually, I'll take this one.
Mr. Cosgrove.
This is something that you and I talked about, and I said I would bring this to the panel. We did an informal survey of some cities in the area to see what they were doing. And that all was compiled on Friday. I think I emailed it to you and I printed out copies and I think everybody on council has. I think Counselor Leehan, yours was emailed to you. So it's really, you don't have to make a decision tonight, obviously, because it's not on the main agenda. I wanted to get you the information so you could see what other folks were doing. There's some ideas in there of tying it to fire hazards. Some cities aren't taking any action. Some cities are banning the sale and the use of. So your options are pretty wide open. I did tell the mayor I wouldn't recommend that you ban sales. That becomes a little problematic, especially if people have leases already that are valid. That might cause some problems for our city attorney. But more than anything, just an opportunity for you to talk and we can put it on a future agenda. I would recommend probably the first meeting in June if you're going to do the ban so we can let people know.
And I'm not going to be at that meeting. So this is our chance to talk about it.
Provide, you can provide direction, too. You can say to queue it up for the next agenda and give an idea of where you want to go.
I see that the city of Portland somehow is banning the sale and use, but I guess we'll leave it to them to figure out how that's going to work.
Yes.
Okay.
I guess I should also say that we are going to provide a safe alternative for the community.
Yes.
I believe we're 95% across the finish line on the contract. Yeah, I'm getting a head nod. So we will do a laser fireworks show at, I think it's Town Center Park. Is that right, Gina?
Laser fireworks? Laser light, right?
Yeah, laser fireworks, that's what I call them.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
But they'll look like fireworks.
But they're not like actual fireworks.
So considering that we will have a laser light show in the sky--
Laser fireworks, yes.
--which looks like laser fireworks, but, and I know we have heard, I have heard from a lot of community members who are, were, you know, grateful to see the progress made in reducing the use of illegal fireworks, no matter what. I mean, they still happen, but people are concerned about that with pets and other things. The idea of tying it to, so I know there's, I mean, I have heard only from people who are hoping we will ban fireworks. I haven't heard anything else. But maybe with the amount of rain that we've had, that hasn't really been on people's minds. So the idea of, the city of Tigard is drafting an ordinance that would ban the use of fireworks during a red flag warning, which is a high fire danger?
Yeah, and TVFNR has some, I think, language in there as well tied to that same metric. And I think Lake Oswego is doing that as well.
And have you heard from the police chief on, I mean, remember, they did have pretty, I think they had a fairly good experience going around and talking to people and trying to get compliance last year? That's an anecdotal description.
I can confirm your anecdotal--
Okay.
--description. I don't think that the police department particularly likes enforcing firework bans, but they did, they were a lot more visible last year for obvious reasons, because of the fire dangers that were present in the community and with all the wildfires going on around us. So, I mean, those are, I mean, the options are basically, you can tie it to something like that, you don't have to do a ban, or you can just ban them. I mean--
Well, I'm inclined, does anybody else have opinions on this?
Last year was wonderful.
Yes. Okay.
It was fabulous. We didn't have an issue.
People were very-- Council President Ockerbaum.
I think, I agree, the comments, anecdotally, the comments that I heard from people were that they appreciated the more cautious approach last year. And it was so, I mean, we were in the middle of this weather thing that it was very clear why we were making that decision. I mean, it occurs to me, though, that weather changes quickly. I mean, I guess we don't dry out in a day, but weather patterns can change quickly. I wonder, in these cities that are tying it to, like, the red flag warning or something, what is the method of doing that communication piece, then? When you find yourself, I mean, it seems, you know, versus not going to happen in months of June, July and August, September, or something, you know, something like that. I'm just throwing that out there. I don't know that that's what I'd be proposing.
I would assume that if that city is taking that approach, that they're probably communicating to their residents that the use of fireworks is tied to this metric. So they would probably put it back on folks to know what that metric is--
Yeah.
--and provide updates. But you're right, you need some time to notify the community if you're going to do a ban.
Yeah, yeah. I guess that's my, or, you know, people make plans. They have a big barbecue planned around that they're going to do this certain activity and then it can be difficult if things change or something, too. So I just wonder what clarity we can give if we decide to take action.
Could we, last year, this all, you know, it was fairly acute, close up to the Fourth of July, and it was hard to really launch a public education campaign. If we started early, notifying that this is on the way and that, and reinforcing what we mean by legal fireworks, that they may be banned if things change. And it would be, so just thinking about that. Counselor West.
I think what we did last year was very prudent. And I think, I don't know who wanted to be outside during that time. I don't know how many barbecues continue. I mean, it was sweltering, like, record-breaking heat and it was dry. And I think everybody kind of rallied and saw the extenuating circumstances. There are really, you know, it's a tough balancing act. I mean, we were introduced to Villebois because of the Fourth of July. It was one of the things that introduced us, is we had friends, actually on Mary's Hill and then Maryfield Park. Am I saying that neighborhood right?
Park at Maryfield.
Park at Mary, sorry, my mind just short-circuited. So Park at Maryfield, we would come down with Jay when he was, we just got into our care as a foster kid. And we would drive all the way from Portland and we would go to the cul-de-sac and people would have their hoses out, everything was responsible. And we would, and our friends would invite us out and we had this community moment with the kids, right? It was wonderful. And then we moved to San Remo or into Villebois when we ended up moving here. And there's like 200, 300 kids and families and barbecues. And San Remo would just be like, it was a Keith's house. And San Remo would just, you've all probably, some of you have even seen it, a wonderful community event that was safe. Some people still didn't like it. I think there's a balancing act to deal with that, right? Like, I also want people to be safe and I think we also probably have limited police force to truly ban something and then ask the police to do a real tough job on limited resources and put them in a possible situation. And are we creating, how do we do this without pitting neighbor against neighbor? Like, it's a balancing act. There's a lot of history and tradition around this. So I think we should be very cognizant of the weather in that time of year. If there is something that could lead to an emergency or an extenuating circumstances, we act. I hope we would continue to act in that manner. Counselor Leehan's right, like, it was effective. So I don't know, like, I kind of struggle and wrestle with this balancing of it.
Counselor Linville.
Thank you. I think we probably all have personal opinions about fireworks and whether it's, whether it's great or if it's a neighborhood nuisance, I think our, from my perspective, my role is community safety. And so I would agree that if we were going to ban the use of fireworks, that there really needs to be a reason for it and it needs to be a safety reason. And I would rely on both the weather conditions and recommendations from our fire officials, whether they issue a red flag warning or if we seek their opinion in terms of whether it is safe conditions at the time or close to the time. So I don't feel a need for us to have to make a decision right now about banning, but it would be, I think it would be really great to identify under what circumstances that would be considered, a ban would be considered. And so that, so that the criteria is fairly clear for us and clear for the public about that this is, that this is something that's for our community's safety.
And if I, I'm going to add something that is really sad, but I think, I read and I think it is something that did relate to the Portland situation. And it was that tragic situation of where someone threw some fireworks in a dumpster and it caused a fatal fire in an apartment. And that is a very one-off situation. But the level, so it's just making me think about the safety, the theme of being safe and being careful and thoughtful of your neighbors is what comes through in our communication about education. So maybe something that we can, you know, we're not going to mention that, but the kind of crazy chaos of people using illegal fireworks is something we want to stay on top of. We don't want that.
Counselor Leehan has her hand up.
Counselor Leehan.
Yeah, yes. Well, that really is the issue. Last year was an unusual circumstance because of the weather that we, along with most of the cities in northern Oregon, banned fireworks altogether, sparklers, everything. And it suddenly went quiet and there weren't illegal fireworks and there weren't legal fireworks. I mean, it was a quiet, quiet Fourth of July. The problem is, in most years, is that it isn't just legal fireworks.
That's--
Every other year, it is, including multiple locations in Park at Maryfield, those are illegal. When they're going more than 10 or 15 feet in the air, really, it's, I think it's six feet in the air is all you get to go up and be legal. And they're sending off, you know, Roman candles. And there's no enforcement on those and they're 100% illegal in Oregon. And they're going off all over town. I mean, that's the, that was the frustration. I don't have a problem with legal fireworks, the little smoke bombs and the sparklers and poppers and things like that in the cul-de-sac, that's all well and fine. But when it gets in the air and off your property where it's coming down, then I don't like that. I have, I have an outbuilding that was built in the 1800s that I have, that's all wood. And I have to worry about that thing all the time. There is no way-- There is no way I can leave town for Fourth of July on an ordinary year. Last year would have been safe.
Thank you.
The question is, and I know the police hate to enforce fireworks. They pretty much disappear, except for last year, when they seemed to be on top of things or the police people were not setting them off. But most years, they're nowhere to be found. And big fireworks are going off all over the place, and there's never anybody looking into it. It's... That's the frustration. It's not, should we have legal fireworks or should we ban them altogether? It's what do we do with the illegal ones? And last year is the only time that they went quiet.
Thank you. Councilor Linville.
Well, I'm going to make a recommendation for us that... When does the next Boone Ferry Messenger... When is it supposed to be out in...
I read a draft today.
Is it within the next...
June 1.
The June 1?
It'd have to get into it in the next, like, 45 seconds.
So it's pretty much done for the June 1?
I think so. I saw the draft. It looked like every page was full.
Uh-huh. Yeah. Well, the reason that I ask is that it might have been timely to put in the definitions there or an educational piece on what is legal and what is not legal.
I think everybody knows what an illegal firework is because they're buying them in Washington, so...
Yeah. They have to go to the Indian reservations, the Indian reservations, or into Washington, or other illegal sources. Any legal stands in Oregon, you're not going to find them.
I think the larger point is the point that Council Lehan is bringing up is you can ban everything or anything, but if you're not enforcing it, that's the issue. So I can have a conversation with Chief Wurps about that, because that is the concern. The concern is for bottle rockets and things like that. It's, from my perspective, it's just insane that anybody would do that because of the liability. I mean, you could be facing criminal charges and civil penalties.
Well, I think maybe a separate mailing is in order because we could do a postcard. We could do something. We talked about... So public education should definitely be done, and we have time to plan that. And maybe we do some communication with all of our neighborhood associations and, you know, the peer pressure, because we don't have enough police officers to go to every corner and drive to every cul-de-sac.
Well, they're doing their normal duties, so I think that's some of the frustration, too, is that on one time a year where, you know, they could be out there looking, too, they're also doing traffic enforcement and responding to calls. So, I mean, you could do something like overtime or something like that. So let me just say at this point, it's a conversation I'll have with...
I think the weather helped us control it last year, unfortunately.
Here we have a conversation.
Yeah. I would just tell you that I live adjacent to Clarkmas County rather... And on the edge of the city limits. And they... When you talk about all of those, what probably were illegal fireworks, there were lots of them.
Marion County.
Lots of them. And, well, still within Clarkmas County.
Oh, I see.
But not... But outside of the city limits of Wilsonville.
So there were plenty.
Oh, there were plenty. And it sounded like shotguns. So... And they went all through the night. So we can't do anything about that. So I say if we're going to do an educational piece, that's great, but I think at a minimum we need to address this at the time that we're experiencing whatever safety issues as it relates to a ban, so...
And the ban would just be strictly to the legal, because the illegal's already banned.
Right.
Right.
Councilor West.
Just an idea, just... I don't know if it's even a reality, but I wonder if legal fireworks shows that are professionally done on the river would give people less of a reason to do it themselves. We are on a river, and it's like... I remember we, as a kids, we'd go somewhere, and there'd be a barge and professionally done, and it's often the city or municipality may partner and put it on. I think in Portland, I watched it happen on the Willamette River. I don't know if that's like something to maybe... We always want to bring tourism and attention to Wilsonville. I don't know if there's... Is that a good way to divert some of that behavior, to say, let's just go to the community event? Maybe that doesn't change the behavior, and they do it anyways, but I don't know. Maybe that's a way to, you know... I don't know. It's just a thought of community and everything.
Sounds like we're starting with the laser. I think we've heard a lot of opinions on this and a lot on community education. I'd like to suggest also neighbor-to-neighbor, peer-to-peer expectations, like building community norms and not leaving it to our police officers.
Yeah.
We didn't budget for a barge and a show. But, you know, that's a thought, and I think it's something to build toward. You know, we're not... No one wants to deny fun. We want to have fun. We want to have safe fun. And I have also had some comments from people who still have... I mean, we just... We are a tree city. We have a lot of trees. We have a lot of wooden structures.
The Willamette isn't wide enough.
Oh, the Willamette is not wide enough. Okay. Okay. Well, thank you. Does that give you enough diversity of opinion?
Yeah. But what would you like me to bring back?
Too much. Okay, we need to give direction.
A lot of discussion. I think we've identified the key issues, but do you want me to bring something back to tie it to the fire district's fire hazard rating
Yeah.
on legal fireworks?
Yes.
And then I will have a discussion with Rob and Gina about enforcement of illegal fireworks and see if there's something more that we can do there, because I think Council Lehan is right. That is the primary concern.
Right.
You know, the ones that you're putting on the street that are shooting up five feet in the air, as long as there's adult supervision, there probably aren't the major concern.
And then the other part that you might have mentioned, but also a targeted communication about this.
Yeah. We have email listservs for all the HOAs, so I'll work with Bill to put something together from an educational standpoint, and we will shoot that out to our various audiences. And maybe we can get Cory to do a story, too.
That'd be great.
If he's listening.
We can invite him to the laser show.
Perfect. It's free admission.
Yes, you missed it. We're going to do a laser light show.
How very almzy of us. Yeah. That's a good idea, too.
Their standing is that Clarkmas County decided not to ban.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Can we increase our penalties to just make it that much more prohibitive?
I think it'd be a little too late to do that this year, but it's something you can...
What is our code like? I don't even know what our code says on this.
I think it's just a basic civil infraction. It's an up to amount.
Okay.
Well, that should be part of the public information piece, is illegal fireworks carry a potential fine of X and, you know, of this much, plus you're liable for any damages that occur when that hot object comes down.
I think that's the scare factor, is that if you lose control of that firework and you cause damage or, God forbid, somebody gets injured, that's a different can of worms than a civil infraction.
Right. Okay. Thank you, everyone. So that brings us to our last discussion, which is about the Willamette Raw Water Treatment Plant Operations and Maintenance Agreement with Ms. Kerber.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The Delora Kerber Public Works Director. So this item is on the consent, but I just wanted to give you a little heads up. So Viola Water North America has been operating our treatment plant since it first went online about 20 years ago. And through the operations and maintenance agreement that we have, they are based on five-year renewals. Whereas we would like to extend their contract for an additional five years, and especially right now, because there are so many things going on down at the water treatment plant that this would not be an ideal time to go out and seek a new operator of the plant. There's not only the Willamette intake facility project going on, as well as our very own... Oh, I... Do I need to start again?
No, you're fine.
Okay. Sorry. As well as our very own water expansion plant or project that we are doing down there as well. So I wasn't sure if you might have any questions related to it before it went on to consent, so I just wanted to give you opportunity.
Your Honor, if I could make just a comment? Is that okay?
Pardon me?
Could I make just a comment?
Oh, sure. I'm sorry. Please do.
This is the third. Is that correct? Is this the third of agreements of the same...
Third amendment to the current contract.
Okay.
But they have been... I believe there might have been one previous contract of five years.
Uh-huh. Yeah. Yeah. So there is a... My sense is this is an issue of continuity, as well as we're happy with the service that we're getting
Yes.
with this contract, and we've contracted with this group previously. So it's not...
We are very satisfied with the service they have been providing us, yes.
Yeah. And then does this... Is this an agreement with both Sherwood and... Is it Tigerd?
Twolton Valley Water District. So it's an interesting thing, is our partners are Twolton Valley Fire District...
No.
Sorry. Water District. Twolton Valley Water District and the City of Wilsonville. We are cosigners to this agreement, though Twolton Valley Water District is not pulling the water from our treatment plant. They sold their 5 million gallon capacity share to Sherwood. So Sherwood is involved. They've seen a copy of this agreement, and they pay proportionally for the cost of the operation, but the actual signers of the agreement are Twolton Valley Water District.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other... I don't think we have any other questions.
Thank you.
The water is working really well. We're getting very good ratings. I just checked it before I left today. It's still working.
Good.
I mean, it's one of those things, it's not... You know, if it's working really well, we don't hear about it.
That's right. That's right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I do have something on the consent agenda that I just wanted to clarify, that it's not on the work session. We have the strategic plan for the tourism strategy in here. Is there anything you want to say about that?
Anything you want to add?
We're not being asked to approve that. Is that correct?
Yes. So this evening, we have in front of you the one-year to... So the one-year implementation plan and your five-year action plan for the Tourism Promotion Committee. We had given you an update not too long ago.
That's right. That's on the consent. I see it now.
Yes. And we'd given you an update not too long ago when we renewed the contract. We didn't think that we needed to do work session, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have on that program moving forward.
But we're not... Are we voting on that?
Yes, on consent this evening.
Yeah, you're approving it on consent.
The only... Can I ask a question then right now?
Sure.
The only thing that I had a question about is that there is a recommendation there for a budget item and in that plan. Isn't that correct? I think there is in year one, a $50,000 budget item. And if I'm looking at it correctly... And my only question is, is not whether that's a good thing or a bad thing. I'm wondering, just in terms of process, we haven't even gotten into the Budget Committee recommendations yet, and so by the council approving that this plan and saying, yes, we agree with it, does it then obligate us to include it in the budget?
Yeah. I think the dollar amounts that are listed... Are you talking about the current year budget impacts? Yeah. That's money that we are statutorily required to dedicate toward tourism.
No, I think there's another one. There's a $50,000... Is that... There's a $50,000 recommendation for year one that has to do with... Wish I had it right here in front of me. It's going to take me a minute to find it.
Well, the long and the short of all that is, any contracts or any expenditures have to receive council authorization. So anything in here is just a recommendation to council. Any budget stuff is approved in the annual budget process. Anything that would be outside of that would require a supplemental budget. I don't think they're asking for a supplemental budget, but what is the 50,000 figure that you're referencing? I see 150,000.
No, they're saying the regular...
Are you referring to the advance of steady effort to enhance tourism development?
I do see something on page 84.
Two. It's on 84. It's request a line item budget of $50,000 to develop RFP for tourism, marketing management consultant services to update the tourism strategy adopted by the council. My only question is not whether that is good, bad, or not. I mean, the recommendation. The question is, if the council approves this plan, are we then obligating the Budget Committee and the council for further action because we've already approved it?
No.
Okay. That's all I really wanted to know.
That's on year two of the plan. So that's '23 to '24. So we would come back to you with next year's proposal, and we generally come forward. We check in with the city manager before we add anything. And with that, we would then add from our 150 in '22 to '23 and ask then in '23 to '24 to have additional funds. But that would come forward to you, and that's for year two of the five-year plan. It's not in year one of our implementation strategy.
And so the way the Tourism Promotion Committee is set up is they're allocated a certain amount of TOT revenue. And then they have to work through the process because they're a recommending body. So anything that they request has to be approved by council in subsequent budget years.
Okay.
Well, thank you for bringing that up, and it was good to talk about it. It does say request, so they're not guaranteed anything.
Okay. Are there any additional questions on tourism?
Okay. I'm not seeing any other points, and I'm ready to adjourn the work session. We'll reconvene at 7:00 PM.
We'll reconvene at 7:00 PM.
I will call to order a meeting of the Wilsonville City Council, regular meeting on May 16th at 7:00 PM. Will the city recorder call the roll, please?
Councilor Linville, here.
Councilor West?
Here.
Council President Oquervall, here. Councilor Lehan?
Here.
Mayor Fitzgerald?
Here.
Thank you. Will the city manager lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the following order of agenda?
Your Honor, I move to approve the following order of agenda.
I'll second.
Motion is moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes five to zero. Would like to give a brief report on our upcoming meetings and things that I've been doing as mayor to report to the council, and you will hear from the other councilors during their council reports on some of their meetings. This past Saturday, the city held a special all-day retreat where we invited members of the 10 or 11 boards and commissions, which are comprised of people from Wilsonville who serve in a volunteer capacity to do a number of things from all of these boards and commissions, everything from the Planning Commission, the Arts, Culture and Heritage Commission, to the Development Review Boards and on down the list. And it was a good day. We heard a lot of good comments from people. We decided that if there were in-depth questions, we would get back to people with more information, so we didn't stay on one long topic for a really long time, and that worked. But I think together, we got a lot of good input to think about our future goals. The city council currently has our two-year goals in place, which are actually in the packet tonight, and we use those to guide us as we do our budget and all of our planning. So it was really great to have the input and suggestions from a number of our citizens. One of the meetings I went to since we last met was a meeting of the Aurora State Master Plan Participant Advisory Committee, and actually, Councilor Lehan is our designated liaison to that committee, so I think she has a more detailed report for us later in the meeting. I will say, from my observation, it was organized. We had a lot of good information, but we were also missing information. It seemed apparent that a number of the issues that citizens were asking about regarding environmental issues, safety, runoff, capacity, and various topics related to traffic and surface transportation, really apparently may not be covered in the scope of the master plan, so we're not really getting a lot of that information. It was a well... You know, we did hear a good amount of other information, however, this master plan is a really extensive process that is funded by the federal government, and we hope to get more of the information. I think you'll hear from Councilor Lehan about that. And Councilor Linville also has a role in another topic that we spend a lot of time talking about, which is our freeways, and so I think you'll hear from her about the recent transportation issues and progress on replacing the I-205 Abernathy Bridge. So I'll just leave that to you to update us on. The... One of our... Our very newest commission, actually, is the Arts, Culture and Heritage Commission, and they held their first meeting. The second meeting will be held on May 18th. That's the one that I'm the liaison to, and as I said, all of our commissions have liaisons who report back to the council. But at this next meeting, they will be working on the strategy and developing priorities to develop a one-year and a five-year master plan, and this commission, you know, will do a number of things as outlined in a really extensive strategy document, but I think one summary statement about what they will be doing is looking for strategic and measurable ways to cultivate a sustainable, long-term plan to support community aspirations for a vibrant cultural scene in Wilsonville, and you have a number of groups in Wilsonville that have been doing things. This committee is not going to take those over or do those events for them, but I think we're going to see a lot of great additional structure, collaboration, and strengthening of our best efforts, and we'll be seeing some new efforts as well, so it's really exciting. We're really lucky to have so many volunteers who put in great time and energy to those committees. We also have this week our budget committees. There are two this week, Tuesday and Wednesday, and those start at 6:00 PM, and we will be reviewing and approving the fiscal year 22 to 23-year budget with our citizen committee, our budget committee, which is comprised of citizens and the council. And last, the next meeting of the city council is going to be Monday, June 6th at 7:00 PM. So that brings me to one last item that I have for tonight, which is the boards and commissions appointments and reappointments. Periodically, of course, people reach the end of their first term and are invited to reapply and continue for a second term if they are active and want to continue, and we also have times when somebody moves out of town or for other reasons vacate their position in addition to a term that has ended. So we have some new appointments today, and I would like to... I've sent these appointment recommendations to the council. The council, as always, has seen all of the applications. Those are shared with all the councilors, and we retain applications for a year after people apply, because we are really lucky in Wilsonville to have more people applying for every position than we can seat every time, and so every time there's a backlog. And I would say that's one of my favorite things, is talking to people and interviewing them, and one of my least favorite things is saying that I don't have a seat for them. But with that, I have made some recommendations, and I would like to ask Council President Oquervall to read the motions, so they can be ratified.
Thank you. I move to ratify the appointment of Cynthia Russell to the Budget Committee for a term beginning May 16th, 2022, that's today, isn't it, to December 31st, 2022.
I'll second that.
Motion has been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I move to ratify the appointment of...
Wait a second. That motion passed five to zero. Thank you.
I move to ratify the appointment of Natalie McNoohan to the Library Board for a term beginning July 1st, 2022, to June 30th, 2026.
I'll second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes five to zero. I'm seeing Councilor Lehan voting here on my screen. Go ahead.
I move to ratify the reappointment of Yasmin Ismail to the Library Board for a term beginning July 1st, 2022, to June 30th, 2026.
I'll second that.
The motion has been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes five to zero.
I move to ratify the appointment of Lynn Anderson to the Tourism Promotion Committee for a term beginning May 16th, 2022, to June 30th, 2024.
I'll second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes five to zero.
And finally, I move to ratify the reappointment of Brandon Roben and Rohit Sharma to the Tourism Promotion Committee for a term beginning July 1st, 2022, to June 30th, 2025.
I'll second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes five to zero. Thank you. That brings us to the communications segment of our agenda, and I'd like to welcome Ms. Kerber, talking about Public Works Week.
Mayor, while she's getting acclimated to her seat there, one kind of complicating factor with your budget committee appointment is that it doesn't leave any time to orient Cynthia to this new role that she's undertaking. I want you to know that I will reach out to her tomorrow.
Good.
Invite her to participate, and we'll do the best we can to provide her at least a surface-level orientation of the budget committee and the city's budgets. I can't ask the Finance Director to do that, because he is overwhelmed with presentation stuff, so I will do everything I can to reach out to her and see if I can get her somewhat acclimated to...
Well, thank you. The budget committee member who resigned did so because she had a very good job offer on the Oregon coast.
Yes.
And our new applicant, our new... Cynthia, who we just appointed, does have a really strong background in that field, so...
She works in the State Audit Division, so she reads our audit every year.
Right.
Wow.
So, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Okay, and that brings us back to the Public Works Week proclamation.
That's right. Mayor and council members. Delara Kerber, Public Works Director. And so this week, between May 15th and May 21st, is the 62nd Annual National Public Works Week. This year's theme is Ready and Resilient, so I have just a quick little video to show, just kind of highlighting a few of the items that staff does around town to help ensure the smooth operation and efficient maintenance of the city's assets. And you're gonna love the music. There you go.
Great. Well, that was a great illustration of the hundreds of actions that happen every week, I'm sure, with our Public Works Department, and they're keeping things running smoothly again.
That is our goal, yes.
Does anybody have any comments to add? Well, thank you for letting us celebrate Public Works Week with you, and please give your team all of our best regards.
I will. Thank you.
Now, we'll move to Citizen Input and Community Announcement, and this is an opportunity for visitors to address the city council on items that are not on the agenda. It's also a time to address items that are on the agenda but are not scheduled for a public hearing. Staff and the city council will make every effort to respond to questions raised during citizens' input before tonight's meeting ends or as quickly as possible thereafter. Please limit your comments to three minutes, and use the raise hand feature of Zoom to let us know if you'd like to provide comments, and we're glad to see that we do have someone in our audience today to speak. Deb Zundel, if you'd like to come to the podium over here? Thank you.
So, for the record, my name is Deb Zundel, and my address is on the speaker card, and I'm not here for any specific issue on the agenda, but it occurred to me that we wouldn't be having the Wilsonville Festival art without the city's support. I mean, for years, you know, we've... Volunteers have just done so much, but with everything else that we do, there's nothing we could have done without not only your moral support, but your financial support, and I just wanted to be here to thank you very much for that, one piece of all the amazing things that this city does, and invite you to come. It's June 2nd, which is a Thursday. That's the opening night. We are gonna have wine and cheese and crackers and live music. A friend of mine that plays with the Oregon Symphony, the pianist, he's gonna be there, and a young student from Wood Middle School who's apparently amazing, he's gonna be there. And I built a huge globe, bigger than I am, and everybody that comes gets to have their own tag and put it on the globe for what they'd like to see our town and this world be all about, and our hopes, wishes, and I just hope you can come.
Wonderful. Thank you, Deb.
Thanks, and I have to leave because I can't drive yet, and my husband's waiting for me, but I just appreciate it so much. I have sat through all of these meetings before, and it's amazing how much time and attention you pay, and that's why our city's such a great place to be. I'm so thankful that we moved here, even though the Realtors told us not to.
They were wrong.
Why are that real...
That's what I'd say, and I happened to... One really good thing, and I'll just add to what the mayor said, was I happened to have the privilege of being at the meeting on Saturday, and all of you were there. Most of you were there. I don't remember if you were there, but it's amazing, everybody's input. I sat with the Planning Commission and somebody on the Tourism Board, and when I first sat down, I thought, oh, you know, why don't I get to sit with, I don't know who, but it was amazing. They had so many great ideas. I learned so much, and it's just, it's wonderful to be here, so thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll see you at the Arts Festival, which goes on for three days, and I see you have some events in July, too.
Oh, yes, and that's...
Or the summer performance.
Yes, and I was looking at Willamette Week and thinking, oh, I would really like to go see Norman Sylvester Band and Lironda Steele, but it was a date I couldn't make it, and the tickets are... it, and the tickets are spread. It was Alberta Rose, it was at the Alberta Rose Theater, and here they're coming to Wilsonville, and it's free, so try to make it.
Thank you, okay. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any other citizens to present? Okay. That brings us to our Councilor Comments, Liaison Reports, and Meeting Announcements, starting with Council President Okravol.
Thank you. A few things to report in on today. I attended the Washington County Coordinating Committee meeting, and at that meeting, we approved a $5.5 million request from Tuolton for a project to improve Boons Ferry Road, so just short distance from us. And that project will widen Boons Ferry Road to three lanes from Tuolton Sherwood Road to Norwood Road, and does some sidewalk infill to Tuolton High School. The funds come from Washington County Transportation Development Tax on new construction that the county collects on behalf of the cities. Also, at that meeting, we reviewed kind of really a preview of the missed it project proposal list, and so that will come back next month to the group as further discussion happens on that. It was just kind of a preview today during the meeting. And had a short presentation on Trimitz's Climate Action Plan as well during that meeting. Last week, on Monday, I attended the Clackamas County Child Care Task Force meeting, and that work continues, and they are looking to continue it for a while into the future too, and looking at how that might be possible and funding for that work for the task force to continue. Attended to echo the comments about the Board and Commissions Retreat this last Saturday. That was just a really, really good opportunity to connect with our city volunteers and relationship build, and so many collaborations. I think it all begins with the conversations and those relationships. So it was nice that we could in-person do that. I think we've probably all been wanting it for a while, and our environment just has not been allowing of large groups. But I'm hopeful that that's something that we can continue going into the future. One comment during the course of the day reflected on some of these joint meetings that we used to do, you know, similar to, with Planning Commission, for instance, or I know we used to do one with School Board, too, you know, and looking at different ways that we can collaborate with our partners in meeting, as we're able to have some more in-person meetings now. Let's see, coming up tomorrow, I'm going to attend a meeting that's kind of a follow-up reflection on the Greater Portland Inc. trip that the mayor and I attended along with our Economic Development Manager to Nashville, kind of looking at some of the different activities that are happening there and doing a bit of comparison and brainstorming of what may work in our own region as well. So I'll attend that meeting. And our Budget Committee meetings, we'll be happy to meet with the Budget Committee this week. And next week, I'll be attending the Urban Renewal Task Force meeting next Monday, and also look forward to helping host a group at our Korean War Memorial next Tuesday. I believe it's a group from the Korean Credit Union. So there's a connection, of course, to the city of Wilsonville with our incredible War Memorial that we have here, and that's drawn the group to Wilsonville. So I will do that. And also, one quick thing, I think tomorrow, last day, right? Tomorrow's Tuesday, so last day to turn in the ballots for this election. The Dropbox is right outside City Hall. You can drop it off from your car, walk up, whatever, and want to make sure that people are able to get their ballots in. And that is it for me tonight, thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Lehan. I think you're muted. I think you're muted.
Now, I'm not muted.
There it is.
I've been missing a few meetings because I've been under the weather, so my voice is not 100%. But I don't have COVID. I wanted to follow up on the mayor's comments about the master planning process, the PAC meetings, and mostly to reiterate that we've been disappointed in how the public involvement piece has been going. And public involvement, as you know from last Saturday, is a piece that we do a lot of. You could say we maybe overdo public involvement, but we have a very engaged public in most of our departments and processes. But the way this works with the Department of Aviation is it really seems to be just for show. On the day that the comments were due, since they didn't take very many comments at the meeting, you were supposed to send them in in writing, but on the day they were due, we discovered they are being shipped off the next day to the Federal Aviation Administration for approval. So they didn't really take any consideration of our comments into consideration before they sent them off. And then two weeks later, they called them back because they recognized that the comments had never been considered, and the FAA was not pleased with that. We sent in 23 pages of comments on the draft master plan and caught a number of errors in their data pertaining to their prior year's aircraft operations, takeoffs, landings, et cetera. And they did say at this last meeting that they would be correcting some things because we had discovered errors, but they've never followed up with us as to what exactly was corrected or how it was corrected. The other thing that's frustrating is that they haven't considered the, they don't feel it's the right time to consider any infrastructure analysis before they do this master plan for the whole airport. And that's kind of backwards of how you usually do master planning for a region for anything. So they're not taking into consideration or even launching a study into things like what the road needs are, what, you know, that they have no septic service, I mean, they have no sewer service, so they're using septic tanks that are pumped out weekly. They have potentially contaminated stormwater runoff that is not being adequately monitored. They don't have a safe domestic water system, and they're not really monitoring the exhaust and air pollution issues. So all of those seem like things that would be reasonable to include in a master plan or at least address in a master plan, how you intend to address them in the future, and they have just said that that's something that would happen later down the road, and there's no need to look at it now. So anyway, so that's the frustrating thing about that. Other things besides the airport that I have been involved with include multiple meetings of the Willamette Falls and Landings Heritage Area Coalition, working to achieve National Heritage Area status, and also multiple meetings of the Willamette Falls Locks Authority as we get ready to take over ownership and operation from the Corps of Engineers. And then a couple of announcements forward-looking. This is why I'm not there. This Friday, the 20th, 11:00 a.m., at the Butteville Store, they are having a dedication of the new outdoor deck, which they've used a number of grants, state and federal grants, to redo the whole outdoor deck of the Butteville Store. It is really fabulous, and important to know, this event includes free ice cream. So 11 o'clock at the Butteville Store, free ice cream, open to the public, and it really is a beautiful thing to see. And then the last thing is, this is cemetery season, and that's because we're, this is the run-up to Memorial Day. We have, a lot of scouts will be involved with putting flags out at the various cemeteries. And if you have not seen or been to the Pleasant View Cemetery, which is behind me here, I would highly recommend that you take a trip out there. It's only a mile and a half from Villebois. It's not like you have to drive a long ways. You can walk there. But if you come on Memorial Day weekend, you'll be surprised because there will be flowers and flags everywhere. The flags go out on Friday night, the 27th, and they will be out for the duration of the weekend, and you'll see families coming with flowers all through the weekend. So it really does get beautiful by the time Saturday or Sunday rolls around. And there's nowhere around here you can see a better view of the valley. You can see all the way down to Silverton if the clouds are not in the way. So it's definitely worth the walk or the drive as it is. So you can find it on any map, two miles west of Villebois, one and a half miles. That's it.
Thank you, Councilor Lehan. And to just recap on the Butteville Store, that is a nonprofit organization, neighborhood organization, right?
Nonprofit, yeah, it's a nonprofit historic organization, and they're usually only open one or two days a week, and then more in the summer. But they do ice cream, and they have tacos. So they will have free ice cream, and then you can buy their tacos also.
Well, I think you're coming out ahead today because I think you're the only person who has free ice cream in their report, so.
Right.
Very good.
Yeah.
So we'll now go to Council West.
I cannot compete with free ice cream or free tacos.
Tacos are not free.
Oh, the tacos are not free.
I pay for the tacos.
I'm sure they're very affordable. But I don't have a ton to report. Whatever is going around that's not COVID, I got it real bad. So like, I wasn't at the last council meeting, and then was recovering, and then I got to go out of town because I finished my master's degree in nursing, and I got to walk the stage and do the whole thing, the family back east, so that was a lot of fun. But yesterday, and these are cool things to announce in the community, is a business called Gathering Give opened up in Charbonneau, and it was fun to be invited to see their new space. And so that was really exciting to be a part of. A lot of people in the community were walking through and checking it out and seeing what was all, what was going down at Gathering Give. And so congratulations to Trina Wolens, to opening up her new business. She lives in Villebois, and now she's also a business owner here in Wilsonville and has a new space. That's really exciting. And I also can echo everything that was said about this weekend. It was great because there are people that were part of, like, the committees that we serve on. I'd never met them in person, right, because of COVID. So I remember like running up to Jordan, who's in our committee with the Metro Enhancement, and I was like, oh my gosh, it's finally nice to meet you, and like getting a chance, like, let's get coffee together. So it was, it had a great community vibe about it. I wish we were better at our card tower. We could not get that thing to stand up for the life of us. We tried real hard, but the games were fun, the interaction was a lot of fun, so I appreciate that. And then I also thought there was great takeaways about how we can interact more effectively as a council with the volunteers, and we have great volunteers that are amazing people that give a lot to our community, so thank you to them. And I think that's about all I got. Oh, yeah, we're gonna be the budget, the budget stuff going on, so we'll, starting Wednesday night here, we'll be, Wednesday?
Wednesday, Thursday.
Wednesday, Thursday, yeah. Wednesday, Thursday night, we'll be meeting with the rest of the Budget Committee to go over the city's budget, which is super important that we do that, and I look forward to doing that also. So, yeah, it's been a relatively quiet two weeks, but it's had a few things in there that have been a lot of fun and interesting, so.
Well, thank you, and congratulations on your master's degree. And I do want to clarify that, I had to typo in my notes here, budget is Wednesday and Thursday.
Yes, yeah.
And.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock, Wednesday and Thursday.
And is that in person, or is it?
Virtual.
It's gonna be all virtual?
Yes, virtual meetings. So with that, we'll go to Council Linville.
Thank you. On the 12th of May, I participated in the mayor's place with Clackamas Community College and a number of businesses on a study that they are doing on the higher ed landscape. Part of this is in preparation for develop, all of the community college presidents working together to look at how can the community colleges best use the Future Ready Oregon monies that are gonna be made available to the community colleges. So interestingly enough, I was the only city person there. The rest of the people, for the most part, were from Intel, Amazon, and some other tech companies. And what really came out of that particular meeting, it was run by a facilitator, and they have been going around the entire state facilitating these groups, and they are hearing very similar things, that the pipeline for trained technology, engineering, architecture folks is not meeting the needs of business and industry. And so they talked about some of the opportunities maybe that business might have to assist with funding tuition, of having classes on-site, some of those other things. So my comments, I had to kind of jump a little bit out of my old hat, put my old hat on and talk a little bit about my work in the community college. But my primary thing was to say that I think there is a role for cities to play in facilitating a higher education or training, workforce education, career and technical education for meeting the needs of our communities. So I didn't want that to get lost. So it was an interesting meeting. It was an hour and a half, and it was great to hear from Amazon and Intel about what their needs are. So that was great. I did want to mention that we can celebrate a little bit. The Wilsonville Girls Golf Team were undefeated in their 2022 league season, and today they went to state, and the boys' team went to state, too. I don't believe they were undefeated, but this is a first for the golf team. It's hard sometimes to compete and get enough girls that are willing to play, but they did, they had a really good season. And both the boys and girls, Wilsonville Boys and Girls Track Teams swept the Northwest Oregon Conference District Track Title, so congratulations to both of, to all of those teams. As the mayor mentioned, I do have a little bit of an update on the status of the I-205 Abernathy Bridge. I will be participating on, tomorrow morning at 7:30, in the C4 Metro Subcommittee. And at that meeting, the Clackamas County Coordinating Committee Metro Subcommittee will hear a report from ODOT staff about this large highway project, the replacement of the Abernathy Bridge. The bids for the first phase of the I-205 Abernathy Bridge project came in recently $120 million over estimates. The Oregon Transportation Commission has now allocated additional funds totaling $495 million to advance the first phase of the I-205. million to advance the first phase of the I-205 project. This first phase will include seismicly retro, seismicly retrofits for the Abernathy Bridge over the Willamette River and adds a new lane in each direction and improves the I-205 interchanges with Highway 43 and 99 East. The next phase adds three miles of new highway lanes on I-205 in both directions and rebuilds or expands multiple bridges between Stafford Road and the new Abernathy Bridge. ODOT intends to apply again for a federal transportation grant to help pay for the project. And I believe that the city will be writing a letter to, of support for that federal grant. Um, and, uh, this is one of the projects that, uh, they were talking about using tolling monies for. And we're really hopeful that they may be able to get the majority of this with federal grant money that's coming for infrastructure money. Um, and let's see, what, what else? I, I think everybody else has talked about the budget committee meetings and so I think that's really, uh, all my report. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Councilor Linville. I'm gonna add one more note that is, is, um, a bit of a spoiler alert for next meeting because I won't be here, but, um, but I won't be here to see it. But we, we had a visit earlier from the, the boys' basketball team at Wilsonville High School and their great accomplishments. And, um, that was our, one of our first meetings in person, so we were glad to have them. We will have a visit next week by the girls varsity soccer team who won the state 5A championship. And they just had a fantastic year and you'll hear more about it. And so this is something to think about with access because as, when I think about soccer, when I was in high school, we did not have a girls' soccer team. They did allow that we could use the old gym for intramural soccer if the boys' team was out of town. So that was good. And then in college, I took soccer for PE at Oregon State University. And a, one of the, uh, team members on that soccer team, who I just discovered was somebody I worked with, he looked different when he didn't have a long ponytail 30 years later. But, um, they decided to, uh, help establish the girl, the first women's soccer team at Oregon State University in 1974. And, um, so I, this is how long it takes to have girls' soccer now. We have our state, uh, championship. And there was a barrier to that one too, thinking of ADA and everything because it was so new and, uh, just didn't make a difference to many people. We had a game against University of Oregon and my parents drove 350 miles, everybody came to see it, and they forgot to unlock the stadium. So we all climbed over and we played the game in the rain. So you just keep pushing forward. And so I hope you'll extend my congratulations to the team for their accomplishments because we are making progress on including more people and things. And let's see what else we can do. So with that, um, that brings us to our consent agenda. And I would like to ask, uh, the city attorney to please read the agenda for us.
Resolution number 2964, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville adopting the FY2223 Five-Year Action Plan and Annual One-Year Implementation Plan for the Wilsonville Tourism Development Strategy. Resolution number 2974, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville authorizing the city manager to execute the Third Amendment of Operations and Maintenance Contract between the City of Wilsonville, Twelton Valley Water District, and Violia Water North America West LLC for the Willamette River Water Treatment Plant. Resolution number 2977, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville amending the 2012 Stormwater Master Plan Project List, Table 9-2 Prioritize CIP Projects, to add Project MC-1 Meridian Creek Culvert Replacement Minutes of the May to 2022 City Council Meeting.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Your honor, I move to approve consent agenda as read.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pa, oh.
She says aye.
Motion passes 5-0. That brings us to new business with Ms. Kerber to talk about the, um, roof repair for the Kiva Building.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Dolores Kerber, Public Works Director. So I have a little slideshow to share. You already did that one. All right, there we go. Okay. So tonight, we're here to talk about the Kiva Building Roof Trust Repair Potential Project. And just to bring you up to speed, so, um, before we use a map that shows, here's the Police and Public Works Building, our community center, as well as Art Tech Building and the Kiva Building. So the Kiva Building was built in, uh, 1979, I believe. And it's a, it was as a church sanctuary. And it's two stories, a little under, um, 7,300 square feet, um, with that. And then alongside was, uh, 20 years later came the Art Tech Building, which was actually a school for, for many years. And in 2007, the city had the opportunity to buy both buildings and all this surrounding land, which we did. And since that time, we have been renting it out to third parties, most recently to the Westland Wilsonville School District. Last year, they decided to, well, they have moved on to a different property and so that they had terminated their lease. And then the city took it over and we were starting to use it to program it for, um, city meetings and other functions. We were doing a, a facility master plan, strategizing how we might be able to have the highest and best use for these buildings. Well, as it turned out, um, we ended up, and here are the, the buildings, and, um, you can see, this is Art Tech and over here is the Kiva Building. And what, what happened was, is we were having a meeting over there one day and we noticed that there was this large crack or gap in the ceiling that ran the length of the building. And then over this on the east wall, which is towards, um, away from the road, towards the back parking lot, we noticed that there was this large gap that was occurring, um, separation of the walls, which made us curious as to what is going on. And so we did some investigation. And what we found is, this is up in the, um, the attic, if you will. And if you can see this little pointed piece of wood here, well, that, that is part of a, a support member off the raptor. So you have the raptors, then you have the vertical support. And they're held together by, they call this gang nail. And the gang nail is basically you, it has a lot of spikes on it, you, you pound it in and it's supposed to hold in place. Now, these are pre-engineered, um, trusses, which would have been shipped onsite and installed. But as you can see, they have separated from each other. And I believe around 11 of the 17 have separated. And that's what's causing the sag in the building, um, of that room. We also noticed that there are some, um, splitting of the lower, um, um, part of the truss as well. For whatever reason, they had two different pieces of, um, uh, gang nails, which is split as, as well. So you can see we have a split. So it's a bit of a mess up there. And, um, just to, for security or, or safety reasons, we had staff go in there and they actually put in a temporary support, just to ensure that nothing would, would come down. We don't know how long it's been that way, but we just wanted to take that safety precaution. So there, our next step was that we hired, um, structural, um, engineers from Harborhoff, Peterson, and Regalus to look into the, the information as to what's going on. And what they found is, as you could see from the photos, is that many of the, um, trusses have failed, the critical, the press plates, or I call them gang nails, have, have come apart. And because of that, you have the deflection of the east wall tilting out, as well as the ceiling sagging up to two inches in the middle of it. And, uh, so there is major, um, repair that needs to be done to the trusses. We asked them to give us some options as to what that could be. And so the first option was, is that they could go in there and repair and replace or re-support the existing trusses. Basically, they would work from the inside, take off the ceiling, go up, patch up the, the trusses best they could. In order to make it, um, uh, work, they would need to put in some support and, or beams and supports. Basically, right now, the Kiva, uh, room is a clear span room where the church sanctuary was. And this would actually add some supports into the middle of the building to help hold everything up, both on the first floor as well as into the basement. You know, the concern about this is we're just fixing what's currently there that we know is, that has failed.
Dolores, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Um, are those supports like permanent beams that would be no longer an open room or is that temporary as they fix it?
No, that would be a permanent fix. They would put beams all the way from the ceiling, all the way down to the basement into the, to the support structure that we had built. And so this particular, uh, estimate and, and with the fluctuation of what it is, there's some contingency in here, is about $234,000 to, to fix the, the roof. Now, option number two would be to go in and replace, um, remove and replace all the damaged trusses. So this option is where they will just basically tear off the roof, take out the, the trusses and bring in new engineered trusses, put those into place, rebuild the roof, re-roof it, as well as, um, fix the, the ceiling and anything else that they find in there. Uh, this, this is a little bit better when you're holistically replacing the damage that you have there. And, um, we believe that this would be, are the best option moving forward. It's a, it's a valuable asset that this city has that I see is using it long-term. Um, the added benefit would be that now you also get a new roof that will last many, many years.
And, and how old is the current roof?
I believe it's around 10 to 12 years old.
And it's like, no?
No, it's not even that old.
2004.
Oh, okay.
It was, but that's what the notes.
Okay. I guess I should look at my notes.
It's about 20 years old.
So that's the existing original roof on the property?
No, we, it, it was replaced.
It was replaced in 2000.
Thank you for clarifying. Okay.
It was replaced.
So, um, let me ask if anyone has any comments. We heard a couple.
I think she's...
I have one more little option.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. So, so I will tell you that this is our preferred option, but we did ask them, well, what if you just got rid of the building? And surprisingly, it, it was not an inexpensive option because of you need to haul off everything with that. So, yeah.
So, um, let's, let's have a chance for some discussion here. I have a question. And that is, with the, you know, um, we do have some ideas of how the building could be used right away.
Yes.
And, um, you know, I suppose as we start using it for, maybe you could just describe some of those plans.
Sure, sure. So what discussions have been occurring is there is a need for Wilsonville Community Sharing to find a new place, um, that, where they are currently located, they need to move out of. Originally, we were going to put them in the lower floor of the Kiva Building, which was a, a great, um, access part that they could get into fit their needs. But right now, because of the damage to this building, we've asked them instead to go over and be in the lower floor of Art Tech as a temporary measure. So we're gonna put them there for now. And then hopefully we will fix the Kiva and then they will move over there. So that's kind of a, a moving target of, of what's happening. The other, I, um, ideas of what is happening is working with the Parks and Rec Division is they realize that they have a need, need for, um, putting where the arts and, um...
Arts, culture, and heritage?
Thank you. Yes, arts, culture, and heritage, um, personnel there, as well as probably some, using those buildings for some programmatic, uh, events such as, uh, classes they could have, training they could have and all. So, so we're working with that. I believe that, uh, Parks and Rec is proposing some funding to help them come up with how they're gonna do the programmatic, um, of, of the Art Tech Building. And so we kind of call it the Art Tech Campus because they're both intertwined. In fact, it's just that there's a bridge between the two buildings as well. And so there's a lot of flow back and forth. And so, you know, this, this is a, like I said, the, this is a great building, um, the, the sanctuary area or the big conference room is something I know just internally that a lot of our staff has used it. In fact, that was kind of how we discovered it. We were having a all-staff meeting of my staff and Parks. That's when we were just like going, huh, well, that looks odd and, and made us think about it. So, yeah.
That's how you discovered the roof problem?
Yeah.
Well, this is, Public Works Week shows us that, that our, our staff pay attention. Really good to find that out before...
Yes.
...any more meetings were held. And, um, with this option two, which we're spending public money and we're looking to the future and we want to get the most out of our investment in this, um, I'm, I'm thinking that option two looks like a good option. But I did want to ask, does it allow for, does it keep the options open for, for different uses of that interior space once it gets into use? So in other words, does it, I, I'm hoping it doesn't pigeonhole, um, the, the layout too much.
No, in fact, uh, option number two will keep the clear span of the room. So the room would be as uninhibited as it is today.
Okay.
Of being a nice wide-open room. Yes.
Um, oh, Councilor Linville?
Uh, thank you. Um, yeah, I've, I've looked at all of the three options and, um, I think regardless of, uh, whether the repair and re-supporting of the existing trusses under option one are done, um, with 18 years of, at least of, um, an asphalt roof, we're probably looking very soon down the road for roof replacement, which in, in these days, um, with supply chain issues, um, are, the, the roofs are really expensive. So I think that certainly would, would, um, would account for, um, the increased cost under option two. And I think keeping that open space and taking care of removing and replacing the damaged trusses, I, I can't imagine with the kind of damage that we've seen that it would be a, a safe fix to try and go in there and, and take care of them under option one. And I think raising the building, demolishing it and getting rid of it is, is not a good option for us at this point. So I'm in support of option two.
Councilor West?
Uh, thank you. What's the building worth? Like what's its, what is its retail value? Do we know that?
I do not know.
Okay.
I, I could find out for you.
Okay.
Ensure it for.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Um, and then if, um, is that technology changed at all? Is there a prob, I mean, I don't know anything about this kind of stuff. So is there a problem with how those trusses were originally engineered? Or is it, I've never heard of this nail thing, spiky thing that you mentioned. I don't know. So like, is that the same type of like technology or method? Like, is it, is it something that is inherently problematic with this type of like roofing or trusses and stuff?
So, so what we understand from the structural engineer is it's, um, unusual, uh, system that's there, that that is not anywhere close to the way that you would do a pre-engineered trust today.
Especially for a commercial structure. It's very common in the agricultural world for tall buildings and stuff like that.
Okay, okay.
And especially, especially with the lower supports, that they're, instead of just one big piece, it's two separate pieces that just perplex them, so.
Okay. So we would remedy that?
Yes. The whole thing will always come out.
But it would still be a, a technology that allows us to keep the space open and more usable?
Yes.
Um, is there anything else besides the trusses and the roof that will be impacted construction-wise, um, that has to also be dealt with?
Well, not that we know of, but as with any construction, once you get into it, um, you know, potentially, uh, we, we talked about making sure that, that they will plumb back up the outside walls because likely what's been happening is they've been pushing out, that's the gap. Um, but, so we're, we're hoping that there's nothing too major up there.
What's the time for like a project like this or is it unknown right now because of supply chain issues and things like that that we face?
Yeah, well, so we estimate that we probably could get some plans ready to go out to bid within a month or so and then ideally... And then ideally, we'd like to be able to take it out to bid and and get it going as soon as possible, so it could wrap up by the end of the year.
Yeah, I have also looked at all three options, and I am comfortable with option two. I don't think the other two are the best path for us to go. I think it's clear that option, in my opinion, option two is a good one. So thank you for answering my questions.
Councilor Linville, and then go ahead.
Does somebody else need to go before me?
I don't see a hand raised.
Oh, okay. Well, I just wanted to look at the budget funding. The funding, it looked like $30,000 of that 340, 840 would come out of remaining funds for this fiscal year, and that the other 310, 840 would need to be budgeted in the next fiscal year. And so my question is, is that already in our budget document? Or it is not?
No.
Okay.
It is not. In in discussions with the finance director, likely what would happen is we would come back with a budget adjustment for this fiscal year for the whole amount. But we are recognizing the fact that that only $30,000 could possibly be spent this year between now and the end of June, and the remainder would be basically rolled over into the next fiscal year. But it's not currently in the budget.
We have a supplemental budget coming to you in June that will come the same night as the budget adoption.
Okay.
So this will be in there.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else like to comment? Oh, Councilor Leahan, I see your hand this time.
Okay, yes. Well, like everyone else, I think option two is the best one. And I would just, you know, we should enter into it with our eyes wide open, that 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 these projects of this scale start opening up something like this. You may run into other things that it would be the timely time to fix them when you discover other things, whether I don't know when we have assessed, for instance, the plumbing or or electrical needs of the building. But if you've got walls open and ceilings open, that's the time to look at those things also. So so I'm I'm for option two.
Thank you. Councilor Oquervall?
I guess I'll weigh in. Yeah, I'll weigh in because we're all making our comments. But but really, I agree with what's been said, the roof issue. I mean, the as presented in the packet, yes, option one is the cheapest number for today. And I think it would be a short period of time where it no longer is the cheapest number because the life of the roof and all of the points that have been made. And then just the issue of are we creating this space so that it's not really able to function in the way that we're wanting it to function? And, you know, maybe it's difficult to put out a number figure on that, but we want we want to serve our community well. That's our responsibility. And so why would we put ourselves in a position where our facility is not able to do that?
Well, thank you. Does that give you what you need?
Yes, it does.
I would I would recommend a motion and a second to move forward with option two.
We have a motion drafted. I just moved the page here.
I move to direct staff to move forward with option two for the restoration of the Kiva Building.
I'll second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion beyond what we've already had?
We did it.
We're done with our clarifying questions. And so I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to continuing business. If the city attorney would please read the ordinance on second reading ordinances.
Do you want me to read both?
Yes, I think we can read both at the same time.
Okay. Ordinance number 863, on second reading, ordinance number 863, an ordinance of the City of Wilsonville annexing approximately 8.72 acres of property generally located between southwest Garden Acres Road and southwest Graham's Ferry Road into the city limits of the City of Wilsonville, Oregon. The land is more particularly described as tax lot 100 and a portion of southwest Graham's Ferry Road right of way, section 3D Township 3 South, range 1 West, Willamette Meridian, Washington County, Oregon. Gary S. Reichlich as trustee of the Eileen Reichlich Trust, Gary S. and Susan M. Reichlich as individuals petitioners. And also on second reading, ordinance number 864, an ordinance of the City of Wilsonville approving a zone map amendment from the Washington County Future Development 20-acre FD-20 Zone to the planned development industrial, regionally significant industrial area, PDI-RSIA Zone on approximately 8.17 acres, generally located between southwest southwest Garden Acres Road and southwest Graham's Ferry Road. The land is more particularly described as tax lot 100, section 3D Township 3 South, range 1 West, Willamette Meridian, Washington County, Oregon. BTC 3 Graham's Ferry ICLLC applicant.
Thank you. I will call to order the public hearing, quasi-judicial land use hearing. And tonight, as you heard described by the city attorney, we will consider on second reading ordinance numbers 863 and 864. Public testimony was accepted during the public hearing, which was closed after the first reading. I ask once again, do any members of the city council wish to abstain, declare a conflict of interest, or report any ex parte contact or any information gained outside of the hearing?
No.
No.
At this time, does staff have any follow-up information to present, or do any members of the city council have questions for staff?
Good evening, Mayor Fitzgerald and members of the council. My name is Cindy Looksoy, Associate Planner, and we have not received any additional information and do not have any additional comments about this proposal.
Thank you. So I will ask for a motion on ordinance number 863 on second reading.
Your Honor, I move to approve ordinance I meant to adopt ordinance number 863 on second reading.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion from the council? Hearing no further discussion, I hereby ask the city recorder to make a roll call vote. As many as are in favor of enactment of the ordinance will, as their names are called, answer aye. Those opposed will answer no. Those who wish to abstain from the vote will answer abstain, and the city recorder will now call the roll.
Councilor Linville?
Aye.
Councilor West?
Aye.
Council President Oquervall?
Aye.
Council Leahan?
Aye.
Mayor Fitzgerald?
Aye. Ordinance number 863 is approved on second reading. If you wish to if you desire to appeal this decision to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals, you must file a notice of intent to appeal stating the grounds of the appeal in a form within the time prescribed by state law. I will now ask for a motion on ordinance number 864 on second reading. Council President Oquervall?
I move to adopt ordinance number 864 on second reading.
I'll second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion among the council? Hearing no further discussion, I hereby ask the city recorder to make a roll call vote. As many are in favor of enactment of the ordinance will, as their names are called, answer aye. And those opposed will answer no. Those who wish to abstain from the vote will answer abstain. The city recorder will now call the roll.
Council Linville?
Aye.
Council West?
Aye.
Council President Oquervall?
Aye.
Council Leahan?
Aye.
Mayor Fitzgerald?
Aye. Ordinance number 864 is approved on second reading. If you desire to appeal this decision to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals, you must file a notice of intent to appeal stating the grounds of the appeal and in the form within the time prescribed by the state by state law. That brings us to city. I'm just going to close the hearing. I don't know if I have to do that. I don't I keep meaning to ask you that. Okay.
I think we updated the script, so if if the script--
You used to have that awkward--
We took some of it out, but it does say public hearing format at the top, which is--
Okay, we'll look at it again.
We can take the public--
It's just been the gift that keeps giving.
It's so good now.
So much better.
It's so much.
Plus, I get to use the gavel.
I know.
I'll find another opportunity.
I wouldn't want to prevent you from doing that.
Okay, so we can simplify it further. So that brings us to city managers' business.
One quick update, Mayor, and then I just wanted to acknowledge the budget book in a way that we got some great pictures from residents. And I don't know if you've had a chance to leaf through, but we threw a lot of them in there. It was a promotion that Bill Evans ran, and we have some very amazing photographers in this community, so I hope you get a chance to look at those. I wanted to follow up on what Ms. Kerber said about Wilsonville Community Sharing. Their lease expired in May, but I believe that they're working with Grace Chapel to stay in there until we can get them over here. The original goal was to get them in there first of June, but the trust thing, we work with them to get them a space that will work in Art Tech. The goal now, I think the city attorney finalized the lease, and so we've reached out to them. And so the goal now is to get them in there, I think, before the end of July is what I heard today. So I think they're okay where they're at right now, but we're trying to get them into that space as soon as we possibly can. So that lease will probably be on your second meeting in June.
Okay.
And I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any about that. Other than that, that's all I have.
Any legal business?
No, Mayor.
The meeting is adjourned.
Wow. Use it again.
Just trying to follow the rules, you know?